Let's keep it down. No, I'm just playing. I'm just playing. Good evening, everybody. My name is Robert Taylor. I'm your representative for District One. And I have two announcements. I'll wait until everybody's listening. No, I really won't. My first announcement is that Maplewood High School-
Hold on, hold on, just a second.
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, thank you to everyone that has come in. If you could come in quietly, we're currently doing announcements and we want to make sure everyone can hear. Thank you so much. Go ahead.
All right. First announcement. Maplewood High School is having their multicultural festival. It is an indoor and outdoor event, so we will be there rain or shine. I look forward to seeing you all there. It's taking place on May the 2nd, beginning at 5:00 PM. And I think we'll be there until 7:00. I might be hanging out a little bit later. Hope to see you there. My second announcement is that I will be attending several PTO meetings in District One. If you haven't signed up for your PTO, please do so, and I hope to see you at the next meeting. Thank you.
District Two?
Thank you. I know that our schedules are getting really crowded as we get to the end of the school year, but I wanted to make sure everyone was aware that the invitation from the School for Science and Math at Vanderbilt came through, um, and Camille was generous enough to put it on our calendar, so I wanted to call attention to that along with, um, several of our other things, and I wanted to make sure that we were aware of the May 1st date again for the mayor's state of the city. That's it.
District Three? District Five?
Pass.
District Six?
Thank you. Uh, just one quick reminder. We are getting to the deadline for applications to be submitted for our next student board member. Um, if you are currently a rising junior and are able to commit to serving for two years, two academic years, and you are interested in becoming our next junior board member, the applications are currently online at mnps.org under the Board of Education tab, and the deadline to apply is 5:00 PM on next Wednesday, April 30th. If we don't have those applications by then, you won't be considered, so please get those applications, and we'd love to see our, uh, next student school board member coming out of one of our high schools. So, don't forget, application deadline is next Wednesday, April 30th at 5:00 PM.
District Eight?
Um, I just wanted to take the chance to congratulate the Aiken Elementary Chess Team who recently came in second place at a state scholastic chess tournament for, um, elementary schools. That is all. Congratulations to the students at Aiken for their huge achievement.
District Nine?
Yes, um, first, today is National School Bus Driver Appreciation Day, so we appreciate our school bus drivers. They are the, often the first and last face that our students see, and, um, my kids ride the bus and love their school bus drivers, um, as do I. So, we appreciate you, thank you. Also, Las- uh, Lawson's Baseball Booster Team is hosting a Fan Fest on April 26th at Bolt Park, uh, which is, eh, on Lawson's campus, and it's from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. General admission is $5. Ages four and under is free. There will be inflatables, dunk tank, food trucks, there will be a JV tournament, there will be vendors there. It's gonna be a really fun community event. Come on out to that and participate, we'd love to see ya. And finally, um, in honor of Earth Day today, I wanted to share some results of our, um, the mayor has had a composting pilot going on in several of our MNPS schools. And just to share with everybody, there has been 3,620 pounds of food that have been redirected from the landfill into compost to be used again for everything from pollinator gardens to regular gardens to all sorts of, of uses to keep things, um, healthy in our earth, and we appreciate how, how well that has done. And in particular, Weston Middle School diverted the highest number of pounds of food waste per student. So congratulations to Weston Middle School, and we appreciate the participation for the groups that were able to do it, and I am extremely hopeful that it is something we'll be able to continue as composting and taking care of our earth is of the utmost importance. Thank you.
All right, and then announcements from District Four. Um, one, I want to congratulate McGavick High School. Um, they recently received a partnership with Intuit, um, is it the bookkeeping service, Intuit? Software service, um, for bookkeeping, um, and partnered with McGavick High School to bring their fir- the first food truck to the district. So, we're really excited about the McGavick Raiders food truck, um, that they will have, and we look forward to seeing them at events across the district, um, into the next school year. So we're really excited about that, congratulations. Also, um, wishing everyone, we are in our second week of TCAP testing. Um, I think this week is math-focused, so we're really excited about that, and wishing all of our students the best on their TCAP testing over the next couple of weeks. Um, board members, just want to let you know that the State of Metro address is on May the 1st. They have seats for all nine board members, however, they're asking that you be there early, because if you are not early, they're giving up your seats. It is over capacity, and they want to make sure that all the seats have availability, so please arrive early. Um, next thing, I want to, uh, wish Dr. Alisa Norris a happy belated birthday. I think we missed it at the last board meeting, so happy birthday to you. And last thing, happy Earth Day. Um, in front of you, I gave, I made every one of you a rose, so I wanted to make sure that you received your flowers now in honor of Earth Day, and if you notice, the little roses have feet on them, so we want you to walk with joy.
Oh, I love it.
And you made it?
I made 'em, yeah. Thank you. Uh, we will now conclude announcements. Oh, I'm sorry. Student board, uh, junior, yep, student, go ahead. Junior board member, I'm sorry. Junior board member?
Uh, my only announcement for today is pretty exciting. I'm hoping to tell you guys more than board reports, but House Bill Number 1199 has passed in all chambers in the House chamber, um, earlier this week. Uh, the Students for Education, um, Club Nationwide basically organized this and brought this for sponsors, and if you don't know what that bill is, it officially adds a student school board member to every single district in the state of Tennessee.
Look at Nashville leading the way. Um, is our senior school, nope? All right, thank you so much. We will now conclude, um, announcements.
All right. I call this meeting to order. Um, we do have a quorum with nine members present and the junior board member. Um, I will have the pledge of allegiance. I would love to have the great Lieutenant Colonel Spencer Taylor of the United States Army give our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
And thank you, Lieutenant Colonel. I have a soft space for the Army, because my dad worked for the Department of Army as a civilian, so I grew up with the Army, but also thank you for your service, as not only to our school district, as executive, executive director of nutritional service, but also as reservist and serving our country. We greatly appreciate your double commitment to our country and to our service. All right, we will now have, um, awards and recognitions. I will turn to, turn it over to Director of Schools, Dr. Battle, for this portion of the- Oh, whoops, sorry. Okay, we have a very important part. Sorry, thank you. Uh, we will now approve, uh, the agenda, have the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Oh, moved.
There is a motion by Vice Chair Niki, a second by Member Mays. Um, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Passes unanimously. Now we'll go into awards and recognitions. I got excited there.
Thank you so much, Chair Player, and good evening, board members. Um, tonight, we have so many outstanding, accomplished, hard-working students and educators to celebrate, so I'm gonna jump right in. Um, earlier this month, a couple of our outstanding groups of students were recognized at the Tennessee Capitol. Our every-student-known singers and songwriters were celebrated on the Senate floor, where they sang the song a cappella, and State Senator Charlene Oliver read a resolution in honor of their Emmy award-winning efforts. The entire Senate was extremely impressed by their performance. Then, a couple of days later, our state champion Hillsborough Borough Boys Basketball Team was recognized by State Representative John Ray Clemmons on the floor of the House of Representatives. Again, there was a lot of respect and admiration in that room for what those student athletes had accomplished. Both Senator Oliver and Representative Clemmons are tied up with the final days of the General Assembly Session this evening, but we hope to get them in here soon so they can share their resolutions with everyone. Again, a hearty congratulations to all of these outstanding students. Let's give them a round of applause. All right, so national public schools, um, were on display for the nation a couple weeks ago, and the reviews were top-notch. For that, we have a big team of people here to thank. From April 7th to April 3rd, excuse me, April 10th, Nashville hosted the Magnet Schools of America National Conference. We worked many, many hours over a couple of years to attract, plan, prepare for, and pull off this event. Let me share a few details with you. First, this was the largest conference in Magnet Schools of America's history with more than 1,800 participants. Eighty-five unique MNPS staffers from every district department volunteered. We also had school-based volunteers who came after school to help in the evening. Many attendees said how great it was to see such a strong district presence throughout the four days. Forty-six of our schools hosted visitors on April 8th, and every tour was filled. Our visual and performing arts team put together an incredible slate of student performances and beautiful displays of student art. Our transportation team provided a shuttle bus for volunteers between the Support Hub and the Renaissance Hotel, while Hume-Fogg Academic Magnet High School, which is just around the corner from the hotel, opened up a room where volunteer meals could be delivered. Virtually, the entire MNPS English Learners Team, Human Resources Team, and Curriculum and Instruction Team volunteered, and the warehouse crew helped bring supplies to and from the hotel. And we also had volunteers from several key partners who helped us throughout the week. And let me just tell you about those reviews. The Magnet Schools of America President said, "It was truly the best conference ever. Please share my appreciation and incredible gratitude for making this the best MSA conference ever." And Deputy Superintendent Gia Moore with Clark County, Nevada, had this to say. "Ever since the CCSD team returned from Nashville, they haven't stopped talking about how incredible it was, and of course, it was." My own review is this. "We have an amazing team, and that was clear for all to see in so many moments throughout the entire week. I am so proud of our team for showing the whole country that we're, what we're all about here in Nashville Public Schools. You showed them how every-student-known mission and mantra guides the work of a wide variety of schools. You showed them how our educators and support staff are getting it done every day. You showed them our commitment to continuous improvement. You showed them how vital our Magnet Schools are building strong and diverse learning communities, and you showed them the brilliance and talent that we know is in all of our schools, and how we're working to make sure all of that talent has ample opportunity to shine." So, I'd like to ask our entire Magnet Schools Assistance Program Team, overseen by Chief of Academics in Schools, Renita Perry, and led by Regina Etter alongside core team members John Nguyen, Wendellin Jean Paul, Catherine Harrison, and Donna Boyd to join us up front to be recognized. So again, I want to thank our entire MSAP team for all of your great work and aspiring work that you led to host the MSA Conference earlier this month. We are grateful to all of you, and I cannot tell you how educators all across this country raved about your great work, your leadership, and how you represented the best of Nashville Public Schools.
She's well done.
All right, again, congratulations to our MSAP team. Um, again, they lead amazing work on behalf of all of our schools. So tonight, we also, um, want to recognize some of our recent award-winning visual and performing arts students. Um, first, let's make sure this goes. All right, McGavick High School winner percussion competed at Western Kentucky University at the Southeast Color Guard Circuit and became the Tennessee State Champions in Class 2A. Let's give it up for McGavick. Also, students from Hume-Fogg, Hunter's Lane, James Lawson, and Pearl Cone High Schools make quilts that are on display at the Country Music Hall of Fame and Museum until March 2026. Let's give it up again. This is not playing nice. Okay, there we go. All right, I'm just gonna read. Mads Magnet Middle School win symphony performed at the Hall of Fame Concert at the Tennessee Music Educators Association Development Conference. Let's give it up for Mads Magnet School. We also had 26 students from 14 schools who were selected to have their artwork featured at the Nashville Predators Kids' Day. That was pretty cool, y'all. Let's give it up for student artists. And Dr. Steve Schaefer, Principal of James Lawson High School, received the Administrator of the Year Award from the Tennessee Music Educators Association. Let's give it up for Dr. Schaefer. All right, so lots of greatness happening, um, every day, so we want to congratulate again our award-winning visual and performing arts students. Um, so it's a great pleasure and, um, privilege every spring to be able to recognize also our students and soon-to-be graduates who have led the way academically at each of our high schools. Our valedictorians and salutatorians have done so many impressive and inspiring things over these past four years. They have shown not just their brilliance, curiosity, and academic skills, but also quite a lot of tenacity, resilience, and tremendous work ethic to get to this moment. A moment when their achievements intersect with their potential in such exciting ways. They are creative and critical thinkers. They are artists, athletes, and architects, scientists, and scholars, volunteers, and visionaries. They are leaders in their classrooms, in their organizations, in their career academies, and on the playing fields across the district. And some of them have helped me directly by serving on my superintendent's student cabinet. And as you will see in here in a moment, these students, well, they're going places, important places where they will continue to do meaningful work. It's inspiring, though not at all surprising, to think about how our schools, from teachers and principals to academy coaches, school counselors, avid teachers, college and career coaches, gear-up team members, and other support staff, have helped prepare these students, and how these students have also prepared themselves to meet this moment and move to the next stage of their lives. I've already had the pleasure of seeing several of these students and their families when we set up, celebrated our first class of Nashville Vanderbilt Scholars, and I look forward to seeing even more of you as we celebrate your Full Ride Scholarships to Belmont, FIS, Lipscomb, Nashville State, Tennessee State, and Vanderbilt at our University MNPS Signing Day this Saturday. Please plan to join us on Saturday as we will have a big announcement to share with all of you. Some special giveaways like laptops, tablets, and mini fridges, fridges, that can help you start college on the right track. And you'll receive your University MNPS stole that you can also wear at graduation. And we know that parents, grandparents, brothers, sisters, and other family members have played essential parts in these students' success stories. These young people wouldn't be who they are without all the love and support poured into them every day by those who are closest to them. So thank you, families, for sharing your young people with us all these years. At this time, I'm now going to turn it over to Michael Cass from our Communications Team to tell you who our valedictorians and salutatorians are, and please keep an eye on the screens above you to see their photos and learn a little more about their accomplishments, their activities, and plans. Students, I'd like to ask that you please come up to the area, right here, don't be shy, around the board table, and face this admiring crowd and proud audience as your name is called. You might have to squeeze together a little bit by the time you're all up here. Um, so, don't be shy, and then we'll take a big group photo at the end. Michael Cass, take it away.
Thank you so much, Dr. Battle. From Antioch High School, we have valedictorian Victoria Madu, who will be in the inaugural class of Nashville Vanderbilt Scholars, who have earned Full Ride Scholarships to Vanderbilt
Congratulations.
And salutatorian Yadi Torres, who also will be attending Vanderbilt on a full scholarship. From Nashville Big Picture High School, the valedictorian is Elijah Montgomery, who is on her way to Tuskegee University to study veterinary medicine. And the salutatorian is Ivy Miller, who will attend Tennessee State University on a Full Ride TSU Trailblazer Scholarship. From Kainridge High School, valedictorian Zuleka Fuentes Diaz is planning to go to college and major in aerospace engineering. And salutatorian Shabir Khan is on his way to Vanderbilt University on a Full Ride Scholarship. From Early College High School, we have valedictorian Tania Wright, who is on her way to Western And salutatorian Karen Takawi, who will be attending Middle Tennessee State University. And both Tania and Karen have earned associate degrees from Nashville State Community College along with their high school. From East Nashville Magnet High School, the valedictorian is Delano Carney, who will attend the University of Tennessee at Chattanooga. And the salutatorian is Sidney Buford, who will attend Belmont University. From Glencliff High School, we have valedictorian Kaylee Ortiz, who will be attending Belmont University on a Full Ride Bell Tower Scholarship. And salutatorian Victor Sustada Jr., who is another member of the first group of Nashville Vanderbilt Scholars who have earned Full Ride Scholarship. From Hillsborough High School, valedictorian Liam Chapman is deciding between Colgate University, Penn State, and Rutgers University. And salutatorian Lily Allen is on her way to Clemson University's Honors College. From Hume-Fogg Academic Magnet High School, the valedictorian is Khalid Hassan, who will be attending Princeton University. And the salutatorian is Grayson Nelms, who will be attending the University of Tennessee From Hunter's Lane High School, we have two co-valedictorians who compiled the exact same unweighted and weighted GPAs and the exact same ACT score over their four years. Daniel Ortiz Gonzalez, who will be attending- Daniel will be attending Tennessee Technological University. And Noe Portillo Canizales, who is on his way to Middle Tennessee State University. From James Lawson High School, we have valedictorian Kat Stockton, who will attend the University of Alabama at Birmingham. And salutatorian Juan Tubi, who will be going to Vanderbilt University on a Full Ride Scholarship as one of the first Nashville Vanderbilt Scholars. From Maplewood High School, the valedictorian is Janet Nino Martinez, who is on her way to Belmont University on a Full Ride Bell Tower Scholarship. And the salutatorian is Laura Gonzalez Noyola, who will attend Lipscomb University. From Martin Luther King Jr. Academic Magnet High School, valedictorian Lena Beleca will attend Harvard or MIT. And salutatorian Jason Luo will be going to Vanderbilt University on a Full Ride Scholarship as a Nashville Vanderbilt Scholar. From McGavick High School, we have valedictorian Milan Rathad, who will be attending Vanderbilt And salutatorian Atreyu Skiers, who is planning to go to the University of Tennessee Knoxville. From Nashville School of the Arts, the valedictorian is Gabriela Castradad Rivera, who is still considering her options for college and plans to study dance and kinesiology. And the salutatorian is Sianni Story, who is planning to go to college and major in From John Overton High School, we have valedictorian Sharon Cardenas Usechi. Sharon is on her way to Emory University. And salutatorian Bennett Myers, who will attend the University of Tennessee Knoxville. From Pearl Cone High School, valedictorian Jennifer Seba is on her way to Belmont University on a full ride Bell Tower Scholarship. And salutatorian Jace Beard has received a track scholarship to attend Colorado State University. From Stratford Stem Magnet High School, the valedictorian is Willa Sands, who will attend the University of Tennessee Knoxville. And the salutatorian is Isioma Ikili, who is on her way to Harvard University on a full scholarship. From MMPS Virtual School, we have valedictorian Cameron Fisher, who will attend Tennessee State University on a full ride TSU Trailblazer Scholarship. And salutatorian Carly Graham, who has accepted a full-time position as a dancer with the San Francisco Ballet. And from Whites Creek High School, the valedictorian is Ines Busani, who will be going to Vanderbilt University. Ines will be going to Vanderbilt on a full ride scholarship in the inaugural cohort of Nashville Vanderbilt Scholars. And the salutatorian is Noe O'Rippe, who will be attending either Florida Agricultural and Mechanical University or Louisiana State University. Along with their high school diplomas, both Ines and Noe O'Rippe have earned associate degrees from Nashville State Community College. As students in the first class of Whites Creek's early college program. We're just situating here.
All right, we've got to do a few rounds of pictures. If everybody can hold tight, we'll get our vows and sows. Then we'll get board. And then board a step away. And then we'll get administrators and families.
Does Dr. Battle want to get in?
We're going to do it.
Okay, here we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. Try it again. One, two, three. One, two, three. Beautiful. One, two, three. Two, three. One, two, three. We can be able to trust you out of house soon, sorry. Never know. Hey, guys. Okay, everybody else move. Any parents, family members who want to come up and get up? Oh, okay. Look at me. One, two, three. There we go. Preview. For us, preview. Like this. One, two, three.
Let's do it.
Our students, especially today as we're recognizing all of our valedictorians and salutatorians, we're so proud of all of them and all of our students who are graduating as a part of class of 2025. I think that was a whole representation of what it takes to support our young people, one, their individual talents and uniqueness, but also the love from their families, also from their school teams. Super proud of them. Also taking a point of privilege, we have some special guests with us this evening that I want to recognize. We have McGavick High School band directors with us in the audience. I want to welcome them up to the front because we want to acknowledge their great work and leadership because McGavick is rocking out right now with all of their greatness. So let's give it up for the band directors at McGavick. And again, I want to reemphasize that McGavick High School Winter Percussion competed at Western Kentucky University at the southeastern Color Guard Circuit. And again, they became the Tennessee State Champions in Class 2A. So congratulations to you all again. All right. So many great things to celebrate for my talented students, our most effective educators and leaders. I appreciate that this board carves out time to really celebrate and recognize the greatness of national public schools. That will conclude our awards and recognitions for this evening. So Chair Player, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you. And I love to see how our students reflect our communities and what America truly looks like. So that's a beauty to see from people from all nations and all backgrounds, be able to see in our great education system in our country. All right, we're going to move on to public participation. If you can come up, you will have two minutes to speak. There is a lighted, oh, it's a lighted clock with two minutes that you will see will count down and the lights will flash as you get closer down to your two minutes ending. And so we, we will begin. Kate Purcell, are you here? All right. Ameed White.
Good evening, Dr. Battle, Chair, Player, and MNPS Board members. My name is Dr. Ameed White, founder of Rock Academy. I want to begin by saying how excited I was to see the valedictorians and salutatorians honored tonight. It's a beautiful reminder of what's possible when young people are seen, supported, and given the tools to succeed. My goal is to ensure that students at Rock Academy, students who are often overlooked, have the same opportunity to experience that kind of success, pride, and celebration. I also want to acknowledge a critical, the critical work being done in our district's alternative learning centers. That work matters. It saves lives. But even that effort, we see the opportunity breakdown, the point where too many students are lost to the system before they ever get to an ALC. That's where Rock Academy comes in. We're not an alternative learning center. We're not a last stop. We're an opportunity charter school. And that is something totally different. We want to be the first in the state to serve the opportunity youth. We're designed to get to students before they fall through the cracks. With a model that blends trauma-informed care, career-connected learning, and authentic relationships, we're not here to compete. We're here to walk alongside the district. MNPS is doing good work, and we believe Rock Academy can complement that by offering another pathway, another option for students who need something different. Let's look to the future together. How do we serve all students, not just ones who already have what they need? Thank you for your time, your leadership, and your commitment to Nashville's youth. Thank you so much. I'm Dr. Ameed White.
Thank you, Dr. White. Berta Young. Berta Young. Terry Pruitt. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Young. Take your time. Take your time. Don't rush.
My name is Berta Young, and I'm here as a parent of MNPS 190 District, not just for my own child, but as an advocate for all the students in our city who feel like traditional school isn't for them. I have first, I've seen firsthand how easy it is for a child to get lost in a system that doesn't work for them. But Rock Academy is different. It is built on understanding that students need more than just academics. They need meaningful relationships, a sense of reverence, flexibility in and out of the classroom. For me, the Rock Academy is designed to offer students mentorship, extended support, and a variety of career pathways, not to mention a late start time to meet students where they are. It provides a community where students are seen, supported, and set up for success. This is just not a school. It's a real-life second chance for many. Please, please approve Rock Academy and give our students the future they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Terry Pruitt.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Terry Pruitt, a representative of District 190. I'm here because of two pillars in you guys' educational community, Mr. White and Mrs. Sims. I'm a father of six and a son of 16. I come from a very hard family. I moved to Nashville six years ago. I met Mr. White and Ms. Sims six years ago. I came here with nothing, okay? Being introduced to him and watching and observing him as a man, as a father, I noticed the way he moved, the way he structured things at that school. And it was just so inspirational to me. I don't want my kids to become a victim of circumstances to lack what I, and I get what I didn't have a chance to get. My father said, go to school, get your education, okay? Mr. White has been so much of a father figure to me as a man, as a, as a father, as a husband. I've watched him respect the families. I've watched him go out of the way for the children at that school. I've watched him go out of the way for the parents. How could you deny a man that has been chosen by God to lead these children to their destination of success? Now, who am I to determine success? I know I want my children to be way more successful than I was because I grew up from the dirt and the mud of nothing, you know? My parents, I didn't have this opportunity. Please give us this chance so my children won't become a victim of circumstances to this cruel world. And they can have more than what I got. They can pass it on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pruitt. Lakita Sims?
MNPS District, Dr. Battle, I am Lakita Sims, serving as the founding operation director for the Rock Academy. And I just am a firm believer that it takes a village to raise a child. And there are so many children out here that are connected. I don't say that this is something that is going to deter what MNPS is doing. I see us as a partner for MNPS. I see it as a partnership to be able to go out and reach even more kids. There are so many youth that needs an opportunity outside of just the educational system, some that are not going to college. We want to give them a second chance. We want to give them a post-secondary pathway to succeed. We want to make sure that they have more than just one option. There's so many barriers that children face every single day, whether it's in school or outside of school. They come in and there's so many factors that play in, and it takes a village. So more is better for me, if you ask me. There are so many different academic things that we can hit as a charter school, as an opportunity charter school, to give them more success and more pathways and more options. And I'm not saying, again, that it's not that we can't do it together, because together we can. Together, we can stand. Together, we can provide more places for these students to be able to have a second chance to be able to do what they need to do. We're reaching for those bottom students. We're reaching for those students that are chronically absenteeism students, those students that are in foster care, those students that have had a run-in with the court systems, those students that feel like they don't belong. Why? Because I was that child. I was that child. I grew up here. I went to MNPS schools. And yes, Hunter's Lane High School served me well, but it took a village outside of that. It took it more than just that. And so my thing is, if I had some of the things that I didn't have at home because I was a runaway child, I was pregnant in high school, they told me that I couldn't do certain things. They put me out in certain areas to where I didn't have a place to go. We want to be that place to go. We want to be that buffer, that one that's in between, so that they don't hit the rock bottom and they are able to succeed. We want to be able to be that one that when that child come in, we say, we believe in you. And there's absolutely positively nothing you can do about it and make a way and be able to change lives in this community. So again, we want to partner with you. And I just say, thank you, thank you, thank you. Please approve the Rock Academy. Love y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Sims. Greg Lippman.
Hello, Superintendent and Board members. My name is Greg Lippman, and I'm from the Groundsville Network. And we're a national organization that looks to support opportunity schools all over the country, and especially support educators who have a deep and abiding passion to serve the kids that aren't finding a handhold or a foothold in the bountiful offerings that we have in our system. Obviously, you can see here tonight, there are hundreds, thousands, tens of thousands of kids in this city that are finding what they need. I just here to say that of all the dozens and dozens of opportunity schools that I've visited around the country, they come in very, very different shapes and sizes. But the thing that always distinguishes the best of them is a founder who understands both how to create deep and sustained and meaningful relationships, but is also willing to dig deep around, hey, you're 16, you haven't yet learned to read, we're going to fix that. Hey, you're 14, you haven't been coming to school regularly for three years, we're going to build the programs to fix that. And so I just want to say that I think it's an incredible moment for this city to have someone like Dr. Ameed White, who can bring that passion for the child that hasn't yet found their place, and the incredible technical expertise of how to build a school that can deliver on the promises we need to make to those children. And I just want to say that in every city, there are children and families who need and deserve something that we haven't yet given them. Nashville's no different than any, any other city I've visited. And I just think this city is in a uniquely good position because someone like Dr. White has picked up the flag and wants to be the school and the founder and the rock for these families. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lippman. Jennifer Walker.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Jennifer Walker, and I stand here as a potential founding parent of Rock Academy. My child, like many others, has encountered difficulties in traditional schools. She often is feeling overlooked and disconnected from academic opportunities. Despite her exceptional potential, her grades have suffered. And as a parent, it pains me to witness her frustration and disconnection. However, I firmly believe Rock Academy will be a beacon of hope and a haven for her to thrive. Under Dr. White's visionary leadership, I'm confident that Rock Academy will provide a supportive, inclusive environment where every student is empowered to reach their full potential. I envision my child thriving in a safe and nurturing space guided by dedicated mentors who will foster her academic, social, and emotional growth. I urge you to please approve Rock Academy, unlocking a world of possibilities for my child and countless others, empowering them to discover their true potential. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. James, or Jane Johnsy, Jonesy? Please correct me. Oh, sorry. There was a, there was a typo. I apologize.
Good evening, Board members. My name is James Johnson. I'm here to speak on behalf of Rock Academy and on behalf of Mr. White. I've been working in the system with Metro for 25 years with Metro's at-risk youth. And I've worked with young men who are starving for affection, starving to be apart, feeling out of place in a normal court, in a normal classroom. And I'm going to say this. And I was kind of figuring out what I'm, what I was going to say before I got here. But us at Rocket Academy, I think we're more fired up than we are excited. We know that there's going to be some challenges, okay? But we have mentors, men and women in this city who really care about the youth and their well-being. And if anybody in here, we have, we have youth who desire to go to school, who desire to make the grade, but their heads are their household. They are running the house. They desire to go to school. They, they desire to be normal. Now, I'm talking about what I know. I'm not talking about what I think. Have you ever wanted somebody to hug you? Just a pat on the back? Good job, son. You can do this, daughter. I think that's what Rock Academy is going to offer on an individual basis to each and every young man, woman, and their families that enter into our facility. Okay? Now, here's the thing. I spoke with, me and Mr. White have similar situations. My wife and I adopted four brothers, four brothers, who attended school at Smith and Craighead under the guidance of Mr. White. Me not knowing that he did the same, we had so much in common. That's how I knew this man's heart was on point. I've got so much to say, but I'll go.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Sarah Tuttle.
Good evening. I also want to start with, I'm a big fan and supporter of the Rock Academy. My name is Sarah Tuttle, and I am the proposed founder of the Forge School. It is a privilege to speak with you tonight, not only as an advocate for a new innovative education opportunity here in Nashville, but also as a former director with MNPS. I am here to express my deep hope that the Forge School, Nashville's first architecture, construction, and engineering middle and high school, becomes a reality for families we all serve in collaboration with this board and my very talented former colleagues at MNPS. I have previously shared materials with each of you via email, but I want to take a moment here tonight to extend a personal invitation. Regardless of how you plan to vote, I would welcome the chance to meet with all of you. I believe that collaboration produces best practices and positive outcomes, and I know that we can find meaningful ways to work together to serve students. I have greatly appreciated the thoughtful conversations I have already had with some of you. And rather than bring a long line of, long line of supporters here this evening, we chose to share one simple message. At the Forge School, we build. We build knowledge, skills, community, confidence, and the future of Nashville together. And in that spirit, we would like to build relationships with you, each of you, and directly address any questions you have about our proposal. Thank you for your continued service to Metro Nashville schools and Metro Nashville families and students.
Thank you, Ms. Tuttle. Jennifer Wade.
Good evening, Metro Nashville District 190. My name is Jennifer Wade, and I am also a metro school parent. But I'm here tonight as a founding board member of the Rock Academy. And I have spent many years serving this city's most vulnerable youth and our young, young people, young people who are navigating the juvenile justice system, who are bouncing between homes while they're experiencing foster care, and who are struggling to find their place in school and in life. These youth represent names, faces, and experiences that stay with me. And that's why I'm here tonight. And I don't put my name on just anything. But tonight, I'm standing here for Rock Academy because I feel like it is a very necessary response to a very real and growing need that we have in our city. Our city is filled with bright and capable students, some of whom have experienced risk factors that make learning in traditional school settings more complex. Some of these students are turning to costly online programs that just don't meet their needs. And our students deserve better. They deserve an opportunity for Nashville to expand its capacity to serve them. And that's where the Rock Academy comes in. We want to complement the services that you all offer young people by being aligned and serving these young people in a way that you can rest assure that offers them what they need, something smaller, something more personal, and something that's healing. And just like this district has created other and really tailored supports for other special populations, I think there is room for us to take a similar approach with this group of learners. We seek to expand the capacity of our, our school's district to serve these children based on a strong foundation. We want to serve them at the rock. And so I ask for your support tonight to serve these kids that are the most vulnerable in our city by helping us to approve the Rock Academy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wade. Elda Hernandez.
Muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es, mi nombre es Elda Hernandez. Estoy aquí el día de hoy para hablar en apoyo a Rock Academy, ya que en mi opinión esta academia hace que el aprendizaje sea relevante para la vida de los estudiantes. Muchos jóvenes se desinculan de la escuela porque no, no le ven el sentido. Pero Rock Academy está diseñada para cerrar esa brecha ofreciendo caminos, experiencias y aprendizaje, prácticas y opciones para padres, para el crecimiento personal y el apoyo estudiantil en su modelo. Esto significa que los estudiantes no solo están sentados en un aula, sino que están desarrollando habilidades, adquiriendo experiencia, y preparándose para el mundo real. Sé que el doctor White y la señora Sim son líderes de real. Sé que son capaces y estuvieron atentos a las necesidades de mi hijo en la escuela y también me ayudaron a mí, a otros padres con GD y ES, en Simpson. Los extrañamos mucho, pero entendemos la necesidad de algo mejor. Ya es difícil para nosotros como hispanos y Rock Academy lo ve y lo planea, brindarles a los niños opciones más accesibles y que se alineen a sus mentalidades, habilidades, y apoyo a la abertura de Rock Academy. Gracias.
Rock and Signor Hernandez. Cornelius Hill.
To this wonderful ward, thank you for this opportunity. Success stories are being created every day. We just watched hundreds of children from all over the country be congratulated for all the things that they have done, what the Rock Academy will do for our children, will create another success story. How will that happen? I'm glad you asked. Number one, it will happen because there will be personalized lessons and curriculum tailored to the students. All of the students who just left here love what they did and academically they achieved. Number two, the Rock Academy was strengthening partnership and community. Parents will have buy-in. Faculty, staff, stakeholders will come together to ensure that their children will succeed. And thirdly, and finally, as a former educator, we will make sure that there is a structured curriculum, the three Rs, rigor, reverence, and results. And I close in my good old Baptist fashion, if I was at church, I would say what I would always say, upon this rock, I'll build my church. So the master teacher himself, when he wanted to do something and provide education for all, he built it upon a rock. So I will ask you, Board members, consider the Rock Academy in this election. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Laney Carnes.
Hi, my name is Laney Carnes, and I'm a proud teacher at Hillsborough High School. Go Burrows! We're really proud of our boys' basketball team. It's really great for our school. But I'm here to talk about something that directly impacts every teacher and classroom in MNPS, administrative support. It is one of the most powerful predictors of teacher morale and retention. When educators feel supported by their school leaders, they report better working conditions, higher satisfaction with their pay, and fewer negative health impacts from their jobs. And there's some really encouraging news. In a recent survey conducted by MNPS, which you're going to hear more results from tonight from my colleagues, 71% of MNPS educators rated their administrative support as good or excellent. But there are still some urgent gaps, the gaps that point directly to inconsistencies in that administrative support. Only 30% of educators consistently receive their duty-free lunch, and just 25% report that they're able to use the restroom when they need to. These aren't just logistical oversights. They're indicators of whether or not a school leader is prioritizing the basic needs of their staff. In schools where administrators are attentive and proactive, these rights are far likely to be more respected. When they're not, it's a major red flag, and signs of deeper issues with leadership, scheduling, and staffing support. We must strengthen expectations for all administrators now, even the good ones. And we have a lot of them. Principals need mandatory job embedded trainings on the MOU. Principals need mandatory job embedded trainings on the MOU, especially on educator rights, planning time, and duty-free lunches. MOU compliance should be directly affected in their evaluations. We also need to ensure that educator feedback is being considered through faculty advisory committees, which are guaranteed by the MOU, but not consistently supported across schools. If we want to retain great teachers, we have to invest in great leadership through training, accountability, and through building a culture of support at every level. Thank you, and go Burrows.
Thank you, Ms. Carnes.
Good evening. I am a employee and resident of this city, and I've lived here for six years. I'm also a member and building representative of MNEA, but I would like to take a moment just to emphasize the importance and value of our support staff. As we move into the fiscal year '26 budget planning process, I want to emphasize the importance of a meaningful cost-of-living adjustment for employees. In a time where inflation continues to reach historic highs, as well as, I might add, property values, a strong COLA is not just necessary, it's essential. Our support staff and nutrition services are the backbone of our schools. They show up every day for our students, and they deserve to be at the forefront of every budget conversation. Compensation is more than just a number; it's a reflection of how we value our employees. I urge you to ensure that employee compensation, particularly through an effective COLA, remains a top priority during this budgeting process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Good evening. My name is Shane Moore. I'm a middle school teacher at Dupont Hadley Middle School. I live in District 3, and I'm the advocacy chair for MNEA. A survey was conducted by MNEA to better aid us in advocating for our members. These findings were compiled in a report that will soon be made available to you all, and I'm here to speak on one of the issues noted on the report. I'm a 17-year educator but moved to Nashville in 2021. Despite the fact that I am on salary step 17 with a master's degree, homeownership is currently out of reach for me, unless I'm willing to spend a large amount of life commuting. I'm also what they call rent-burdened, because it's very difficult for me to find an apartment that doesn't eat up a huge portion of my salary. What initially attracted me to Nashville was its affordability, but that seemed to change overnight. But what hasn't kept up pace, however, are educators' salaries. There is so much wealth in Nashville, so it's so hard for me to understand why educators are not paid a salary that allows us to live here. Our report notes that adjusted for inflation, educator salaries have essentially declined by 5% over the past decade. The current average MNPS educator salary would only allow for a home that costs under $201,000. Now, I've looked around Nashville for a house at that price, but much like a unicorn, I would love to find one but has yet been successful. The reality is that MNPS will not attract and retain new educators if those educators are not able to afford to live in the community that they work for. My partner and I often talk about moving back to New York City, where we had more take-home pay after taxes and insurance, and were less rent burdened than we are here. Our survey shows that 52% of MNPS educators say their salary does not meet the financial demands of living in Nashville. This lines up with the facts. Nashville ranks 30th out of 33 major metro areas in teacher pay. This reality undermines educator stability and morale; it puts strain on physical and mental health. If we want the best education in our classroom, we have to do much better than 30 out of 33. I know that MNPS Board has prioritized its educator pay, and I ask that you continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mary Jo Cram.
Good evening. My name is Mary Jo Cram. I'm a 16-year teacher with MNPS. I teach at the academy at Old Cockrell, and my two sons attend Isaac Litten Middle School and Dan Mills Elementary. I serve as secretary treasurer for MNEA, chair of the PACE Committee, and on the PECA team that negotiates our MOU. Our MOU is a legally binding document that includes limitations on required meetings and protections for teachers' time for individually chosen instructional planning activities, but the problem is that it is not always followed. According to MNEA's survey, over half of educators report frequent interruptions in their planning time, with high school teachers reporting the most disruptions. When we negotiated the MOU, everyone in the room agreed that planning time is not a luxury; it is a condition for student success. Research shows that teacher preparedness not only improves lesson delivery, but also enhances student performance. Ensuring that educators have sufficient uninterrupted time to prepare is one of the most powerful investments a district can make. The effect of this lost planning time during the school day is that educators have to make more, take more work home, impacting their home lives and stress levels. This workload is unsustainable and leads to burnout. The good news is that the solution for this problem is already in place: the MOU. All the district has to do is enforce the rules it has already agreed to. The district must hold principals accountable for contract compliance through proactive monitoring and by incorporating MOU violations directly into their teams' evaluations under the Culture for Teaching and Learning domain. By following through on its commitments, the district can improve educator morale and retention, contributing to better student achievement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cram.
Hello, thank you, Dr. Battle and school board members. I'm here to speak in support of a cost-of-living adjustment and our students and families' right to a public education regardless of immigration status. I am reminded of Ruby Bridges' walk and how far we've come, then bills like the one turning away our students from public schools based on their immigration status remind me we still have a lot of work to do. Since when do we pick and choose who we teach? That's not why I became a public school teacher. It's always the students who are the most challenging who come back to visit you. Preparing for graduation, art shows how to identify ICE warrants, consulting students' grief and change in dynamics in our classrooms when students unenroll, T-CAP, teaching content observation, parent conferences, tutoring, walk-ins, ELA club, and more. This is teaching today. I hope that you can see why our teachers are fighting for COLA, for adequate planning time, all of which takes into account the solidarity work teachers are part of when families and communities' rights are under attack and educators step up even after the school building is closed. I am proud to be an MNPS teacher, and even a prouder one when our district presents a resolution, if this bill comes back like vouchers did, that protects free and public education for all. I am a proud MNPS teacher when school districts listen to teachers and support our union campaigns, and I am a proud MNPS school teacher when school districts say, "You belong here." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Negron.
Good evening, Dr. Battle and members of the board. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Dr. Chris Ann Christian. I am a school psychologist, and I'm here tonight as a member of MNEA. I first want to thank the board for all the hard work you do to make MNPS a great place to work. I've had the opportunity to watch a few board meetings virtually, and I'm always impressed with what I see. I have worked in other districts in Tennessee, but my experience here in MNPS has been the most positive, largely because of the efforts you all have made to support us through excellent benefits and investments in classroom associates and other support staff in recent years. At my schools, I have seen the significant difference it makes to have a fully-staffed building with plenty of people to help cover the overwhelming load all educators carry. As a school psychologist, the weight of education has never been heavier than this past year. Dealing with continued academic and social impacts of COVID, the terrifying reality of school shootings in our neighborhood, and increasing behavior and crisis management, it's exhausting and important work, and unfortunately, it often leads to unmanageable levels of stress and burnout. Many of my colleagues have already left or are considering leaving the profession. One of the most common complaints from my colleagues and myself is the amount of time spent working outside of contract hours just to get the minimum requirements of our jobs completed. Psychologists frequently do paperwork and write evaluation reports at home. Almost every teacher I know gets to school early and leaves late. While additional support staff will continue to be helpful, it's also imperative that educators are compensated for every hour they work. If a special education teacher spends their entire day, often with no real lunch break or planning, providing invaluable services to students, this means that IEPs are written at home in order to stay in compliance with state timelines. These should be paid hours. If we want to continue to be a premier school district in Tennessee with the best educators around, we must treat our educators as the valued experts they are. We must trust them to teach without a rigid script. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Christian.
All right, good evening. Thank you for allowing me the minute to speak. My name is Chase Gay. I'm a high school music teacher and MNEA representative, and I live and work in District 3. One of the key findings in our State of MNPS Educators survey was that teachers feel overburdened by extra duties and lack of planning time. Survey results revealed that 100% of MNPS educators report regularly working outside of contract hours to complete essential job functions such as lesson planning, grading, and classroom preparation. These additional hours are largely driven by planning time interruptions and expanded workloads during the school day. MNPS educators are guaranteed 180 minutes weekly, but most are not receiving even that. If planning time is interrupted three times per week, teachers are left with 40% of contracted time. At five, that drops to zero. 50% of educators say that planning time they get is frequently interrupted and not conducive to focus work. Routine violations of MOU are widespread, especially in high schools, as 42% of high school teachers say their planning time is interrupted most days of the week, and 10% say it's interrupted daily. So one of MNEA's campaign demands is adequate and protected planning time for educators. Emphasis on protected, because these policies only matter if they're enforced. You can support us by training and holding principals accountable for enforcing planning time protections. I know my colleagues. My colleagues are innovative, intelligent, and passionate educators, but high-quality instruction with supports for every student takes uninterrupted time to develop and plan. Please support MNPS students and educators by considering this demand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gay. Henry Guess. Harry, sorry, Harry Guess. My apologies.
Not a problem. Board, Dr. Battle, thank you for hearing me out tonight. I am Deacon Harry Guess. I'm from St. Vincent de Paul Catholic Church, and we are a member of Noah. I'm a preacher who's seeing what's going on in the world, and I have to say to all here, "But by the grace of God, there go I." And so when we talk about these children who don't have a voice, we need to remember that could be us. And what you do, what you provide, and the way of education is critical, critical, to them being able to contribute to this society we live in, this community we live in. And so I would ask you, even though things have happened in our favor, we got a pass, but the devil doesn't quit. And so we'll have to deal with this issue of disenfranchisement for children in our community. So it's not an immediate problem, but it's coming back. As a retired Navy captain, I would tell you to stand strong, because we need to have courage in the face of adversity. I admire what you do here at the Board of Education. I want to say amen to all of these teachers that are coming up here and saying, "Hey, we need some help." My wife's a retired teacher, so I feel it. I hope that what's coming in the future will be that we can serve all of our children in this community of Nashville that we love. Thank you.
Thank you, Deacon Guess. That is the end of public participation. Now we'll go into committee reports. We'll have a committee report by the Budget Chair, Vice Chair Nabon Kinney.
Thank you. Is there a way to pull up the budget slide? Just where it says our priorities?
So once you pull up the budget. Okay. Someone's...
Skip over budget priorities. There you go. Slide eight. Is that it?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you so much. So in the Budget Committee Finance meeting, we went over, we went back over and reviewed our budget for the '26, '25, '26 school year, upcoming school year, so FY '26. And I just want to reemphasize our budget priorities as a board so that we can make sure that we're clear about that. One is continuity of operations. That is making sure that we at least receive the same funds that we received last year. That's our starting point. As we've received this year. So next year, receive the same funds that we received. Yes, at the same level of service. We want to be able to maintain that. The second one is continuing our strategic investments. That's where we are looking to, for the Esser Bridge, and being able to continue operations through that Esser Bridge where pandemic funds no longer exist and converting those into our operating budget. Another priority is strategic employment compensation, and I want to make sure that we emphasize that. We had a lot of employees come up today referring to compensation. That is one of our strategic priorities, so I want to make sure that you are clear that that is a priority for us, including the COLA that is in there. And then the final thing is comprehensive safety and security planning. So we need to prioritize that as well as we have implemented and continue to implement and prioritize safety and security for our school districts. So in looking at that FY '26 budget, these are our priorities as it relates to that and fall up under there. If you want to look for a breakdown of what's in each of those categories, please go back and review our budget meeting that just occurred right before this meeting. It has it broken down even further so that you can go into detail on that. And then if you have any questions, feel free to reach out. All right? Thank you so much. That is the end of our board report.
Thank you. We will move on to the consent, you move on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Move adoption. It's been moved by Member Young and second by Member Mays. All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye. Any oppose? It passes unanimously, nine-zero. We will now move on to new charter applications. I will now hand over to Dr. Battle for the presentation of applications.
All right, thank you so much, Chair Player. At this time, I am going to turn the podium and the mic over to our Director of Charter Schools, Sharika Roby Grant. She will lead you through the charter presentation this evening at the conclusion of that. She will turn it back over to you, Chair, for any discussion. Thank you so much, Dr. Roby Grant.
Madam Chair, members of the board, and Superintendent Battle, thank you for the opportunity to share the MNPS Charter Schools Office Review Team's report on three new star charter applications. This evening, the charter office will present the findings of those new star applications received. The MNPS Charter School Office received three new star applications: The Rock Academy, The Forge, and Rocketship Tennessee #5. Tonight, the board has the following voting options for the applications received: approve or deny each new star application. State law states that upon receipt of grounds for denial, the sponsor has 30 days from receipt to submit an amended application to correct the deficiencies. The LEA will have 60 days from receipt of an amended application to deny or to approve the amended application. The MNPS Charter School Office is responsible for ensuring the quality authorizing for 26 existing charter schools. Leads the authorization process by coordinating internal and external experts to review each application and... application and share the evidence findings report with the MNPS Board of Education. The overall objective in the New Star application review process is to ensure review team members evaluate the New Star application using the published evaluation criteria from the Tennessee Department of Education, incorporate the capacity interview responses within the rating determination, rate each section using the rating standards from TDOE, and reach a consensus among the review team regarding the rating of each section and overall application. The review and rating of the New Star applications consisted of a variety of members from multiple MNPS departments as well as an external reviewer. MNPS review teams rated each applicable section of the New Star application within the following categories as noted on the slide. The review team utilized the rubric provided by TDOE to determine the rating for each section and overall rating for each New Star application. The ratings included meets or exceeds the standard, partially meets the standard, and does not meet the standard. As you know, the board could receive multiple types of charter applications within a year. The most common applications received are New Star and Renewal Charter applications. I want to take this opportunity to provide a high-level overview and distinction of how each application is reviewed and rated by review members. As you can see on the flow chart, both New Star and Renewal applications are comprised of review members. Both applications include the review and rating of each section within the application, and both New Star and Renewal applications include a consensus rating where review members determine an overall rating for each applicable section within the charter application. One distinction within the review process for New Star applications is review members will also provide an overall application rating for the application. As indicated in the guidance from the Department of Education, to be eligible for approval, an application must earn a rating of meets or exceeds standard for each applicable section and on the overall application evaluation rating. Review members consider the totality of evidence when the overall application rating was determined. Please note, the MNPS Board of Education's vote makes the final determination on whether the application is approved or denied. We will begin with the New Star application for the Rock Academy. The Rock Academy is proposing a 912 Opportunity Public Charter School aimed at serving at-risk students as defined in the newly enacted legislation. The school is proposing an enrollment capacity of 333 students in the Nashville area. The board report contains the strengths and areas of concern for the applications identified by the review team. For this and future charter applications, I will highlight a few of the key areas of deficiencies identified for each section based on the rubric provided by TDOE and listed within the board report. In academics, given that nearly 27% of MNPS students are English learners and 14% are students with disabilities, it is critical that a charter application demonstrates strong compliance support structures for these particular populations. The application for the Rock includes service models for English learners that are not fully aligned with current state identification guidelines. It also lacks clarity on diploma pathways for students with disabilities, raising concerns about meeting Tennessee graduation requirements. In operations, the application included a facility timeline that did not account for permitting or material delays, raising concerns about the school's opening. The compensation plan lacked differentiation to attract high-performing or dual-certified teachers. Additionally, the application did not provide sufficient details on the CTE programming or transportation to support its plan for district-wide student recruitment. In financials, the application lacked a clear plan and funding strategy for transitioning to the permanent facility in Year Five. The application also did not adequately budget for tenant improvements beyond Year Zero or account for inflation in Year Four supply costs. In portfolio review performance record, this section was not applicable based on the category type and not reviewed or rated by review members. The review team determined the rating for the Rock Academy as partially meets standard in each applicable section and overall application rating. I will turn it over to the board for the discussion and vote for the New Star application for the Rock Academy.
Thank you, Dr. Robey-Grant. We will now make a motion for consideration for the Rock Academy. Board Member O'Hara Block.
A motion that we will deny the New Star charter application for the Rock Academy based on the charter school review team evidence, finding, and report and presentation noting deficiencies in the academic plan and design, operations plan and capacity, and financial plan and capacity. Among those within the review team's evidence, I would note specific concerns that should be addressed include, but aren't limited to, Section 1.8 Special Populations, Section 2.4 Personnel and Human Capital, and Section 3.1 Operating Budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Elrod. Discussion? Member Young?
Thank you, Chair. This particular charter application is unique from others, and I guess because it is an opportunity charter, and I wanted to know if maybe we could get a little more insider explanation on what exactly that means compared to the traditional charter applications that we've come in. And I don't know if that's a legal question or a Dr. Battle question, or who wants, where that wants to.
Dr. Battle? Director Robey-Grant?
Yes, so this legislation was newly enacted in December of 2024, and it's aimed for particularly targeting students that are considered at risk. So, the legislation did include a variety of what would be considered at risk. It included students that have dropped out of school without obtaining a high school diploma or high school equivalency credential, a student that has been adjudicated as a juvenile delinquent or is awaiting disposition of charges, a student that has been previously detained or incarcerated in a juvenile detention center, students that have been retained at least twice in any of the grades kindergarten through eight, or a student with one or more years behind in obtaining credit required for promotion to the next grade level, students that are chronically absent as defined in Tennessee's Every Student Succeeds Act or ESSA Plan, a student that is pregnant or a parent as defined in 49-1-903, a student that has a documented substance abuse, or a student that has experienced circumstances of abuse or neglect. So, there were, these criterion are outlined by the legislation as considered at risk for the Opportunity Public Schools legislation.
And so, does the school choose, do they have to accept all students that meet any of those, or can they select which categories they would like to target?
So, there is a verification process that is categorized by each of these components of what's considered at risk. So, students do have to fill out a verification form, and then the school would determine from that verification form which student falls in each of the, in either of the categories that were just listed. The school would be responsible for ensuring a certain percentage of those students are maintained based on the categories that are considered at risk.
I believe that's, at risk students over a three-year period.
He's speaking to the mic.
Sorry. Yeah, and I can believe that they have to maintain 75% of at-risk students as part of their total enrollment over a three, if they don't, they have to meet that for a three-year period.
Well, Member Young, is your question specifically, are they able to pick and choose which students to enroll out of the pool of applicants?
That wasn't that question, but I guess that was the next, actually, you were kind of reading my mind.
So, they do have the ability to choose those type of at-risk students that apply?
I... So, I think if we were voting tonight on whether Dr. White is the person to lead a school like this, I think it'd probably be unanimous yes, and I want to make that really clear. I think there is some potential here, this, I don't think it's no secret that I am just philosophically opposed to the idea of charter schools. However, I also, this intrigues me in a way that others do not, and I think it's because of this particular approach as an opportunity charter and the certain segments of the population it could serve. I'm intrigued by this. I want to, I understand the analysis that the charter office put together. I think I really would like to see, on appeal, what comes out of that because I think, I think there might be something to this, and I just wanted to get that off my chest and say that because I just, this speaks to me in a way that a lot of charter schools do not. And I just, I don't know, and that's not a guarantee of my vote in the future of any particular way, but I did want to share kind of my thinking of where I'm at on this. Yeah, I mean, those are my thoughts. Yeah, that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Member Young. Member O'Hara Block?
So, you, in a lot of ways, said a lot of the things I was planning on saying, and part of the reason I made the motion I did is since my first set of charter votes, which was two years ago, I've learned a little bit about like how the process works. And so, this is our first vote. This is our first opportunity to hear this. And I think it gives us the opportunity to say what you just said, which is, I'm intrigued by this. I actually literally have the same word written down, which was intrigued, and that I suspected, you know, I'm intrigued by the application and the model. So, I wanted to be the one to make the motion, not because I feel strongly about denying this application, but because I wanted to have the opportunity to say, "I'm intrigued by this, but we're not there yet," sort of like what I think you're saying. And to be able to talk a little bit about some of the things in particular I thought needed to get addressed. Again, similar to what you said, not that that's a guarantee of any future vote, but that I'm curious. And I think it's because of the category, there are some very specific categories named around the students, but I also have some important questions I want to see answered, and I suspect that I wasn't the only one that was both intrigued and had questions. So, for me, a couple of things. You know, we heard speakers and, you know, I've heard talk of wanting to be serious about partnering with the district, about filling a need that is seen within the district. But the application itself, and I think the review committee rightly names some issues around AL, around students with disabilities, around teacher recruitment for those particular areas, it is that, you know, we are talking about some of the hardest-to-staff subject areas, and I think that those areas within the application need some attention. Also, very specifically sustainability, between 15 and 25% of the budget annually is philanthropy and teaser revisions, neither of which are guaranteed. I appreciate very much the openness to the application to address those things, but, and there are contingencies listed, but I do have concerns about what happens if those things don't come along. And then, the last thing is, I don't think the application clearly reflects how the program both differs and builds upon our systems. And I think that's an important thing for us as a district as we think about these things. So, how does it specifically, you know, I've heard the, I've heard speakers talk about this, I've heard conversation about it, but how would this specifically work with alternative learning centers, assignment academies, programs at Arizona schools? What does that look like? All of that needs to be within the formal commitment that is made to the district or any chartering authority for that matter. And so, for those reasons, I'm a no for now. Eager to see revisions and appreciate the spirit of partnership.
Thank you, Vice Chair Nabakini.
In that same light, thank you, Board Member Young and Board Member Block. I do, in addition to some of the questions that you've already brought up, have one additional question as it relates to, in the application, does it specifically say how students are going to be recruited for that program? Because we're dealing with a certain population of students. Has it been identified on how they're recruiting those particular students? What does that look like? I'll start there.
There was information about how those students would be recruited. It was a little, it wasn't robust in how they planned to recruit. I think there are a lot of community partners that were named within the application, and they're relying heavily on the community partners to help support their recruitment efforts with those particular students that are at risk.
Okay. And then, the other question that I have is around a potential conflict of interest. I noticed one of their board members is also with the juvenile justice system, so I want to know if there's any guardrails that have been put in place so that it doesn't create a pipeline, so to speak, a direct pipeline, or how do we, like, is that an issue? Should that be something that we should be concerned about? I don't know, but I'm just, like, who do I direct that?
I would need to look at the conflict of interest provisions, but I think specifically we'd be looking kind of if MNPS data is used outside of its prescribed purposes or utilized purposes. Speaking with, given that flow of information, it's the MNPS data that we'd be looking at. So, we can review.
Okay. Yeah, and so, for me, I just want to make sure that we're looking into that, and so I would look, I look forward to getting some feedback on that. And then, again, the differences and similarities between what we currently offer in our ALCs versus what this program is looking to offer, I'd like to get more clarity in that space as well. Thank you.
Member Taylor?
Yeah, along that line, I think that, you know, we heard from folks that this wasn't the same as an ALC. And so, when this legislation came out, and I guess I may be addressing this to you, Dr. Battle, when the legislation came out, did we look at the students that were listed in the legislation that we currently serve? And are we able to see if there is a need to provide additional types of services to those students from the legislation?
Yeah, I think this goes back to the question about our portfolio review. I mean, listen, I think what we have here is kind of a overlap between our ALC or Student Success Center design to our academy, Assembly Youth Academy design, as well as some of our other portfolio options. And so, is there a gap there? No. I believe there are a number of portfolio options that meet the various aspects of how the law is designed, including, you know, our responsibility to educate students regardless of their school of zonal choice.
Okay, and then, just to follow up, I know one of the options is for students that have dropped out of school or that haven't attended regularly. What are some of the things that we're doing specifically for them?
So, a lot of those same portfolio options still exist in that space, particularly our Assembly Youth Academy schools, which we are fortunate to have three of here in Nashville that is uncommon across the country to have that number. here in Nashville. That is uncommon across the country, um, to have that number of options across the city. In fact, um, for students, we also are home to, um, an adult, um, high school, and we offer, um, a number of pathways for, um, things like GD, um, options, um, as well. So again, I think when you think about the robust portfolio, um, it definitely is represented in our LEA, um, uniform schools.
This is more of a comment versus a question, maybe. Even with all of these different portfolio options, I guess there is a question here. Do we believe that every student is actually being served by all of those portfolio options? Or is there space for an additional option that the students may be able to, uh, to take advantage of? Maybe that's a philosophical question, I don't know.
I mean, we are in a district with the mantra of every student being known, so we work hard every day to diversify our portfolio and pathway options for all of our students. I think this also goes back to, um, what we tout often about our internationally-known Academies of Nashville. A lot of that work, um, was to serve this very purpose, right? The, when you think about the Career Academy pathway, it, it is not only about the rigor, we want to say it's about the relevance, it's about the relationships, it's about the readiness, um, of, of our students, and if you follow the data points from even that program model, um, to today, you see significant, um, progress by way of one data point. We're actually touting right now the highest graduation rate we've seen in our recorded history, um, as a school district. So, um, our, our mission is always around all and every student. Is that difficult in some situations? Yes. I don't think you will find a school district across this country, um, that could say, um, absolute, um, to all those situations, since there are lots of factors outside of, of our control. But our goal, um, with our mantra of every student being known, is to be responsive, um, to our students to the greatest extent possible, um, given the portfolio of options that we do have. I mean, it is something that we are proud of as a city, that we have so many portfolio options. I mean, when you think about it, not just in the ALC space, but the Simon Youth Academies, you think about the big pictures. I mean, we've done something very unique and creative with our early college model. We just celebrated a number of students who are graduating with their associate's degree in high, their associate's degree before their high school diploma, um, by the way, um, next month. So all of that is in response to the beautiful, beautifully talented and diverse student population, um, that, um, we do have. And I don't think that innovation stops, um, at any point. I mean, it shifts with every class and every cohort of students. But there are a number of, uh, portfolio options out there to meet the very needs, um, that are represented in our now close to eighty-two thousand students.
So this is going to be my last, uh, comment. You know, I'm pretty new to the school board, um, but I remember when I was running for office and thinking about the reasons why I ran for office. It wasn't to just be a cheerleader. I love what MNPS is doing for the overwhelming majority of our students. However, I do know that in my community specifically, there are students that could use additional resources and support. I don't know what all of that looks like all of the time. I do know that our educators work very hard to address those needs and address those concerns. But I also know that there are students who do fall through the cracks. Excuse me, and I see them at the grocery store, I see them in my church, I see them in my neighborhood, and I just want them to have an opportunity to be successful. I love my wife, I love my kids, and I know that some of these kids don't necessarily have that same opportunity at home and don't necessarily have that same opportunity in our communities. And I'm not against trying to give other folks an opportunity to do excellent work with the resources that we have been tasked with overseeing. I think as an elected school board member, people expect us to be wise stewards over the resources that, um, that are given to our city through the tax dollars. And we do an amazing job here in this district of utilizing those funds, which oftentimes aren't enough to do the work that we do. And I love celebrating students. I want to be able to celebrate all of our students, and I think that by giving us an opportunity to look at what is the word, intriguing options? I think that's okay, and I don't think that it says anything negative about what we're doing in our public schools. I don't think that it says that, you know, our teachers aren't working hard every day, that Dr. Battle isn't doing an amazing job. I just think it's another option for people, and it's another opportunity for these children to be successful. And if they are able to do something that might be a little bit different from what we're doing and something to learn from, I believe that's the original intent of charter schools. I think it's okay for us to think about that. Now, full disclosure, I do know Dr. White, I know him very well. I know the work that he did at Smithson Craig Head, I know Smithson Craig Head was a reward school at one point in time under his leadership, and so I trust him to take seriously the work that could potentially come from an opportunity like this. So that's my little spiel. I thank you all for your time, and, uh, I look forward to working with you all to figure out how we can, uh, best serve our students in this district.
Thank you, Member Taylor, uh, Member Elrod.
Thank you. So, um, as Zach said, I probably echo the, I am typically not a charter school advocate, and frankly, anyway, I believe that we don't need those seats, and that is usually a big part of the reason why I will stand against a charter school is for fiscal responsibility. I understand that this school is trying to do something unique, particularly in response to the most recent legislation that has passed out. That said, these are the most needed, these are the students with the highest needs. These are the students with the largest amount of necessary supports. They need the most trained employees. They need the highest amount of actual hands-on pedagogy, thorough, professional answers. They need community, sure, but it takes more than community for a lot of the answers that we're trying to get for these students. And that is true whether it's a group of students singularly in a singular school at this suggestion or whether they are inside of an ALC, whether inside of one of our Simon schools, which I appreciate you bringing up, I was going to bring them up as well, or any of our other pathways that we have inside of our schools. But these students deserve more than just intriguing. These students deserve to have strong supports. And when we have a plan that is very insufficient, particularly with our students that have the highest needs, it is exceptionally concerning. It should be alarming to us all. No matter how interesting or intriguing it is, we are doing a disservice if we are not preparing not just our students, but the people that are, we are giving the responsibility of our students to. We all want to do no harm. That is the reason why we are all here. And I know that we have many different interests of what we want to do to push the ball forward with MNPS, and the passion from these parents is admirable and wonderful to see. I would say that for us as a board, it is interesting to say that this is so interesting when this has not been a push at all in our strategic plan. This has not been a discussion of something that we have been wanting to do besides changing our ALCs and our Simon schools. We started that conversation last year. Uh, Dr. Gentry from District One really pushed that hard because of how much she saw the need inside of her district, and frankly, how much unfortunately District One historically has been underserved. So she was really an incredible advocate for trying to redesign those two schools, even before that law came up, and before the term of opportunity school became a thing. And we have done that work. Now, when I say we, I mean us as a board, and of course, our staff, and staff that is widespread. But there have been some incredible changes in our ALCs. We've had some really impressive turnarounds. We've had some really great reach-out to students and agreeable to the fact that students can be hard to, to meet, because there are some of our students that have everything against them, and that is incredibly unfair. It feels morally apprehensible. It breaks me apart. But again, those students deserve the highest, strongest amount of supports. And so I cannot, even, even if we said we needed these seats, which I would maybe disagree with, and I know that we will likely get more information from this school, and I appreciate the materials that they sent in advance. I want them to hear that I did review them. I still feel like we are not prepared enough for these students, and these students don't deserve our second best. These students particularly need us to be ten, ten toes down. We need to be in. And we have got to make sure that we do it right, and so we need better planning, more information, stronger recruitment, making sure that we're not just re-harming, re-traumatizing students that are already going through the worst of things. So, that is where I stand on it today. I understand that we will get more information, and I look forward to reviewing that, and again, I will give that a good and thorough review and be fair in all honesty. But again, that is my biggest encouragement in response to what we saw, is that it is simply not enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Member Elrod, Member Ma- Yeah, sure. Uh, Member Mays.
Thank you, Chair. So, uh, in listening to the comments from my colleagues, I say that I would agree with everything that I've heard. My question, or my concern, maybe it's a combination of both, is around, uh, location. The proposed enrollment is three hundred and thirty-three, but this does not give us a particular location. And my concern with that is the, uh, based on the application deficiency that's been reported here, the operating budget is not fully anticipated expenditures over the first five years, so it's, it's looking to me like we don't have a particular location, and if we are already dealing with, with children who are at the greatest risk, my concern is that we will shift them on a continual basis for the first five years. That's not okay either. Uh, I'd really love to see that addressed. I do, and I'm not going to say intrigued, I'm going to say the passion that was spoken from the, uh, speakers tonight touched my heart, and it is a blessing to be able to hear that there are so many people who understand and recognize and see the children that are not always seen. So I'm very grateful that you were here tonight for that. Mr. Johnson in particular, it would have been great to be able to hear the rest of his speech, but I'm sure it was going to be something. But, um, my concern is with the, uh, the lack of information about, uh, an overall location. Nashville area doesn't tell me anything. My concern is that if you're going to be in a stable environment, these kids, if they're already at high risk, they need to know that they're going to be in a stable environment continuously, not, um, maybe we'll be here, and if we're anticipating over three hundred students coming into this school, it speaks to being able to give us more details on a stable environment for learning. And I do commend you, this, uh, this application, the, the design, the idea behind this is, um, well, I will use the word intriguing because it is intriguing. It is, uh, unlike anything that I've seen, and, uh, it spoke to me when I read through it, because I, I have seen and I have been in the shoes of those students. I know, you know, I'm a North Nashville girl, born and raised in three-seven-two-oh-eight, so I understand where you're coming from and trying to support these children. So I'd really love to see more information, uh, that supports a stronger application. So, um, yeah, I'll leave it there, because otherwise I'll just start rambling. Thank-
Thank you, Member Mays. Member Feen?
Also echoing, uh, my board members, um, intrigued. Thank you for coming today to speak to us, to give more insight, details, parents, faculty, just the community in general. It is admirable to see that drive and that initiative and how passionate you are for being there for those kids. I represent three-seven-two-oh-eight, also now reside three-seven-two-oh-eight, so I am in that neighborhood, um, I interact with a lot of those kids. Uh, my son is a graduate of Pearl Cone, so I interact with those parents as well, and so I do know that need. I think for me, we focus a lot on reactive measurements, and I'm like, let's be a little proactive more. Three hundred is a, a lot of kids. You know, how, how did all those kids get there? Have we partnered, tried partnering through different community organizations or with our Community Achieves? Like, are we mentoring? Are we showing up now, um, in lieu of, you know, to, to this being passed? Like, what are we doing to try to be proactive? Um, I would like to hear more about that. Um, like, what are, what, what work are we doing now? You know, how can I best help or support? If you don't have those connections in our school systems, how can we mend those bridges? I think, yeah, I see Alfred out there. He's a good support system for those community partnerships and organizations to move forward, if you are interested in that. But also intrigued, I know that seems to be the going word, so also intrigued, um, would like to see more information. I didn't receive the information at all, um, prior to this meeting, other than from the board, of course, but I think you all said you sent an email or something out, and I didn't get that, so add me. Moving forward, and also reach out, like I said, if there's any other, you know, if you have any questions or are there any partnerships, I know it's the end of the school year. But would just like to learn more about what you all are doing in the community as of now, um, who you are working with, more about the kids that you are serving. Also had a concern, like Cheryl, about location. Because location is going to be important when it comes to transportation. And those kids, we already talked about them being underserved, how would they get there? You know, what would be their means of transportation for, for being able to attend the school? Also, the staff and the faculty, like counselors, like all the things that we do need to serve that particular group, um, of kids. And that, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Feen. Is there anyone else? All right, we will go for a vote. There was a motion made by Member O'Hara Block, uh, to deny, and a second by, uh, Member Elrod. We will all, um, will take a vote. If you're in favor of Member O'Hara Block's motion to deny, um, the Rock's, uh, new application, um, say aye. Is there any oppose?
I'm opposed.
All right, thank you. So it's eight to one, um, for denial of the Rock Academy new starter application. All right, thank you, next.
The next new start application is the Forge School. The Forge School is proposing a six-twelve school in the Donaldson-Hermitage area with a focus on career-connected learning. In academics, the application lacks sufficient details on the resources needed for the additional academic programming such as transportation, supplies, and funding. It also lacked a sound enrollment plan, failing to consider another charter school opening nearby, the impact of shifting fifth grade in the elementary tier, and existing middle schools in the same cluster in its analysis. In operations, the contingency facility plan lacks sufficient detail to assess the viability. Additionally, the startup plan was incomplete with missing responsible parties and unrealistic timelines. Finally, the transportation plan did not provide enough information to ensure it could meet all student needs. to ensure it could meet all student needs. In financials, the application did not include adequate funding for tenant improvements, student supplies, or renovation costs. The budget narrative also showed limited financial expertise at the school level in the first few years, with the financial director not hired until year three. In portfolio review performance record, this section was not applicable based on the category type and not reviewed or rated by review members. The review team determined the rating for the Forge School as partially meets standard in each applicable section and overall application rating. I will turn it over to the board for the discussion and vote for the new start application for the Forge School.
Thank you, Dr. Roby Grant. We will have a motion for the Forge School. Vice Chair Nabah Kenny.
Thank you, Chair Player. I make a motion to deny the application based on the findings from the Charter Office, specifically for Section 1.5, 2.2, 2.3, and Section 3.1 and 3.2.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Just a point of clarification.
Yes.
Is it only those specific pieces you want reviewed?
For me, yes.
Given it's the board's motion.
Oh, given it's the board's motion, sorry. Let me reemphasize that. I'll do that in a minute. All right, so I make a motion to deny the application based on the findings from the Charter Office in all categories.
Is that sufficient?
That is sufficient, however. Did it all go into the operation of the academics?
Including but not limited to the academic plan and design, operations plan and capacity, financial plan and capacity. That's it. That.
Like all those actually, are there specific pieces that you would like to specifically focus on but not limited to?
Yes.
Are those the ones you spoke to earlier?
Yes. All right, so and specifically but not limited focused on Section 1.5, 2.2, 2.3, 3.1, and 3.2.
That is a proper motion at this point.
We got this.
Confirm my understanding is that the specific sections noted by the review board, as well as the specifics that the board would like addressed to be sure of the application.
We have a proper motion. Is there a second? Hold on, I think we're still clarifying.
Second.
Yeah, we need a second. Okay, a second by Member O'Hara Block. Discussion.
Yes, I'll start off the discussion related to my concerns and seeing the findings specifically. One area of concern is around the deficiencies related to recruitment and enrollment. And there not being a clear idea of how that recruitment and enrollment would take place. I know that we have had, we currently have a charter school in District Four that has been there for 10 years. And in the last five years, the initial enrollment was a little over 300 students. It has dropped in the last five years down to a little under 200 students. So with that, and then we've had another charter school that was newly charter school that just opened up or just approved in that area. And they were able, they were unable to open their first year and had to delay it their second year. And even now, they're struggling with enrollment. So I would like to hear more about recruitment and enrollment and the demand for this school in our district. Secondly, is around facilities and startup. I'd like to hear more information around that. That was also a struggle from previous schools and finding facilities in that area. And that also contributed to the inability to start on time. And then last, around the operating budget and narrative and those deficiencies. I'd like to to see more information as it relates to that. Thank you.
Member O'Hara Block.
So in the charter rubric for reviewing these, one of the things in subsection 1.5 is that the response describes the community's demand and need for the proposed school, detailing how this demand was identified, explains the educational option, how the educational options offered by the proposed school differ from those available in the geographic region. This is probably among my chief concerns. And I think this is something that we generally, as a board, have highlighted for schools when they're coming. So I didn't feel like in reading this section of the application that was clear to me why this, why architecture, construction, and engineering? I can sort of like intuit that that's an important thing in this in this area. We have been growing. But the connection between that and the need for this school, especially given the offerings that we have at zone schools, was not particularly clear. So I thought that was an issue with this. Also, there's a section that describes the board. So one of the things in Section 1.6 is that the response details a well-defined plan for partnerships, community organizations, nature and scope of each partnership. That's another sort of deficiency I saw in this application, especially that it's going to be heavily based in community partnerships. And with a board that I think at this point has, is limited in size and scope and also experience with specifically working from the school perspective. I think there's limited expertise there. So those are my concerns.
Thank you, Member O'Hara Block. Is there any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. There has been a vote to, there have been a motion to deny by Vice Chair Nabah Kenny, seconded by O'Hara Block. All in favor denying the Forge New Start application, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. We'll now move on to Rocketship.
Our last application is Rocketship Tennessee Number Five. Rocketship Tennessee Number Five is a K-5 school with an enrollment capacity of 576 students, focusing on personalized learning and a rotational model of humanity STEM, learning lab, and enrichment in the Antioch and Canridge clusters. In in academics, the application did not provide a clear rationale for choosing the proposed location, especially given the presence of an existing Rocketship school and other charter options. It also included service models for English learners that did not fully align with current state rules. In operations, the facility plan and costs were below what is budgeted for new construction, funding allocations, and are based on past construction experience, which did not include the new storm shelter requirements as outlined in IBC Section 423.4. The applicant also failed to address why previously denied renewal for Rocketship Northeast wouldn't ensure the success of this new school. Finally, the governance structure among Rocketship Tennessee, Rocketship National, and the CMO was unclear, raising questions about organizational viability. In financials, the application relied on expense assumptions below typical growth rates and did not clarify which schools in the network were included in the financial health review. These gaps made it difficult to assess the network's overall fiscal viability. In portfolio review, the applicant's past performance raised concerns about their ability to operate a high-performance school. Notable issues included a delayed opening in Washington DC, a school closure due to low enrollment, a denied new start application, and a non-renewal of a school in 2023 due to academic underperformance. The review team determined the rating for Rocketship Tennessee Number Five is partially meets standard in each applicable section and overall application rating. I will turn it over to the board for the discussion and vote for the new start application for Rocketship Tennessee Number Five.
Thank you. We'll now move on to a motion for Rocketship Number Five. Member Maes.
Yes, and I'm going to try to make this make sense the first time out.
Okay.
So pray for me. Okay, so I make a motion to deny the new start charter application for the Rocketship Number Five based on the Charter Schools Review Team evidence finding report and presentation, noting deficiencies in the academic plan and design operations, plan and capacity, and financial plan and capacity among those within the review team's evidence. I would note that there's, these specific concerns that should be addressed include but are not limited to Section 1.5 of the, let me go back to the beginning. Section 1.5 of the academic plan and design, Section 2.2 of the operations plan and capacity, Section 2.10 of the operations plan and capacity, and Section 3.2 of the financial plan and capacity, and Section 4.3 of the portfolio review and performance record.
That's a proper motion.
All right, we have a proper motion. Is there a second? Second by Member Tyler. Discussion. Member Fain.
Just to clarify, did you say that there is already a Rocketship in that? Okay, I thought that's what you said. Okay. Are there any findings where we need another? At this particular time, another school? Is there, are they offering anything different than the initial? Is it also the same grade?
The one in Antioch appears to be K-4. This one would be a K-5 model.
So just one extra additional instead of just adding fifth grade to the original?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Member O'Hara Block.
I think just to to expound a little bit on Member Fain, there are a number of charter schools in the Canridge-Antioch area. Kip-Antioch College Prep Elementary has over 600 students. Kip-Antioch Global Elementary approved for 600 students. The Tennessee Nature Academy, Lead Southeast Elementary, Rocketship is 600. And and, you know, one of the things that's that's in this application in the beginning portion is a, is part of the, and again, I had read this part before, but the, there's a specific need element in the charter review. I know I'm placing more evidence on that than in some other areas, but it seems particularly important that we are addressing a presented need. And one of the things it talks about is the overcrowding of schools in Antioch and Canridge, the district schools. But also, in addition to the schools I just named, we, as a board, have approved a Canridge Cluster Elementary, purchase of a new piece of land, we're planning to build a new school there. So I'm struggling to see the need in the same way that I think you were asking about. And then the other sort of large concern is the portfolio review concerns that are raised in here. It seems that, you know, to me, when we're talking about approving new schools, whether they're district schools or charter schools approved by the district or charter schools approved by the commission, we should be thinking about enrollment need, you know, a type of specific program need, and overall student outcomes and success. And if if we're not clear that all of those things are needed, then I'm not clear on what we're, why we're doing it, right? I think those are important conversations we should be having, but I don't think this one gets at it.
Member Taylor.
I did want to add on this one, just to reiterate with Board Member O'Hara Block mentioned that I feel like I remember us making a solid investment in increasing the number of seats that we have out there by building a new school building. And by approving the charter there, it just seems like that would go against the priorities that we've set for that particular community. I know that's not my district, but I do know that that's some of the work that we've been involved in. And so for that reason, I wouldn't be able to support this application.
Thank you. Member Vice Chair Nabah Kenny.
Thank you. I just have one question. So they have two schools technically, one in the Plus Park area and then the other one. Are any of those schools at capacity?
They are not.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Member Maes.
Yeah, and so one of the things that really concerned me about this application was the previous performance and the concern that, I didn't see anything in this application that would make me believe that it would improve. And so I'm really, and the fact that we already have a K-4 school. And to Dr. Roby's point, this would just be one additional grade. I'm not understanding why we are attempting to open another school when adding a grade to this one would have probably sufficed. So, you know, among the other things that included in my motion, this one seriously concerned me. So, thank you.
Thank you. Member Tyler.
Well, Member Maes just said what I was thinking. It's not just a capacity issue. It's the history of an inability to shepherd students to success.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing there's no more, no more comments, we will now take a vote. Those, the motion is to deny Rocketship. Motion made by Member Maes, seconded by Member Tyler. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Roby Grant, for your presentation. And I would just like to thank the board. I know you say this after every part, but this, the seriousness and the thoughtful discussion, uh, discussion is, woo! That's not very unintelligent. The thoughtful discussion that we've had and continue to think through and take your responsibility as board members seriously. And so I just appreciate the quality and the high-level conversations that we have had during this. Now we will move on to board reports. Is there any board reports? Okay, I will like to make an announcement. Our next board meeting on May 13th will happen at 3:00 PM. So 3:00 PM on May 13th, the board meeting will start just because we have a graduation meeting following at Nashville State for our dual enrollment students. And so we would like to get there in time to support our students for that great occasion for those who are getting their associate's degree along with their high school diploma. All right, Vice Chair O'Hara Block.
I just want to send out a reminder to board members again because it was, there was a lot going on earlier. But the State of Metro address, again, is on May 1st. They have reserved seats for all nine board members. They ask that you get there early or your seat will be gone. Thank you.
Hannah, do you have something to say? Yeah, do you have anything? Okay, just making sure. I'll make sure you aren't left out. Be no further business, this meeting's adjourned.